Good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'd ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we recognize the quorum of the board with five members present. Tony Schmidt has an excused absence, and Nancy Justman will be joining us in a few minutes. With that, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I would move approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. All right. So the next item on our agenda is a very important one because our board has the honor and privilege of recognizing this year's employee award recipients. These individuals were nominated along with dozens of other outstanding employees for this recognition. This year's Rolfs Education Foundation Award winners are: Jelaine Lidkey, Special Education Teacher at Jackson Elementary; Jennifer Schraut, Classroom Teacher at Silverbrook Intermediate; Scott Loon, Special Education Teacher at East High School; Sally Hoyer, Family and Consumer Science Teacher at West Bend High School. Our board is incredibly grateful for the contributions of these individuals, and we're each going to take turns sharing some words of praise collected from colleagues of these distinguished educators. And so I'd ask our superintendent to start us off, please.
Thank you. First, would Jelaine Lidkey please stand? Jelaine, there she is. Jelaine is from Jackson Elementary. Jelaine has served the West Bend School District for 30 years. She's a master at building on a child's strengths and using those strengths to motivate the child to engage and learn new skills. When students have repeated struggles with behavior or academics, she thinks of ways to help them by using their interests, which significantly improves student participation in the solution. Jelaine, the board thanks you for your contributions to the success of our students and staff. Congratulations. I have the next one as well on behalf of Tony. Jennifer Schraut from Silverbrook Intermediate, please stand. This year Jen took on a new challenge by being a fifth-grade teacher for the West Bend Virtual Academy. The virtual environment has brought on many challenges for educators, but Jen rose to the challenge and embraced it. She creates ways to engage each and every child through a computer screen and holds their attention so they can absorb each lesson. Jen's always thinking about how to improve, streamline, and make the virtual lessons as valuable to students as possible. When a child needs extra help, she sets time aside to meet with them privately, and she grows their self-esteem by praising students for having the courage to say they need help. Jennifer, the board thanks you for all that you have done to support our mission of excellence for all. Congratulations.
Would Scott Loon from East High School please stand? Scott has been an active participant with the Social Studies Curriculum Team at the high school for 20 years. Scott is not only strong in developing and introducing curriculum, but he's also sensitive to student needs by developing individualized plans for student success. His passion for history helps students understand how it relates to their own lives on a daily basis. Not only is Scott an exceptional teacher, he's also an incredible community member. Scott is one of the leaders for East High School's National Honor Society. His personal character exemplifies what the club stands for. He's also extremely passionate about the history of the Holocaust and is even presented at the Olga Lang Yale Institute's annual conference. Scott, the school board thanks you for your commitment to excellence in education for all students, including my three daughters. Thank you.
Would Sally Hoyer from West Bend High School please stand? Sally, these are words your colleague shared. Sally is a phenomenal teacher and a great role model for her students and other staff members. She has a great rapport with all of her students. She knows every student by name and cares for each one of them as if they were her own. She challenges her students to work out of their comfort zone because she knows they can accomplish more than they think they can. This year has brought on many changes to the Family and Consumer Science Program. Teaching hands-on classes and running a school restaurant are challenging jobs when you are in person, and also adapting this to virtual and hybrid learning. The success of the Culinary Arts Program, the Nifty Nibble, and students who graduate from her program can all be attributed to a variety of factors, not least of which is Sally's vision, care, concern, love, and dedication to every one of her students. Sally, the board thanks you for everything you've done for our students and for your colleagues.
The board also wishes to recognize this year's recipients of the Support Employees of the Year Award. These recipients are all part of our support staff. They were also nominated by their colleagues and selected by a panel of previous winners. This year's recipients, I will name, will make you stand in a little bit as we read the special accomplishments that you've given to the district. But I'll just read the... This year's recipients are Al Sternig, District-Wide Project Maintenance Manager in the Facilities Department; Renee Ashburn, School Nutrition Staff Member at Green Tree Elementary; Dave Hamilton, Maintenance Mechanic at the high schools; Laura Birch, Accounting Cashier in School Nutrition; Astrid Palmer... Palma, sorry, Classroom Paraprofessional at Silverbrook Intermediate; and Jamie Steltler, Health Room Professional at McLean Elementary. The board expresses its deep gratitude to these individuals for the dedication they have shown to our students and staff. The board would like to share some words of praise collected from colleagues of these exceptional employees.
Would Renee Ashburn from Green Tree School Nutrition Staff please stand? Renee is dependable, flexible, hardworking, fair, honest, and smart. She's a team player. Renee works well with her team to ensure that things are done and done the correct way. When DPI did its administrative review at Green Tree a few years ago, Renee received many compliments from the DPI staff regarding her knowledge, understanding of the program, the way she manages her kitchen, and the way she keeps the kitchen in compliance. Renee is easy to work with and always has a positive attitude. Renee, the school board thanks you for your commitment to our students, staff, and community.
Dave Hamilton, please stand up. Dave is a high school facility staff member. Dave is one of the hardest-working and most genuine employees in the district. He treats his job with the most upright level of respect and care. He performs high-quality work showing a commitment to excellence, making sure every detail and plan is completely... completed fully while not settling for average outcomes. He takes the time to get to know the students and the staff while he is working. He asks about them, frequently letting others know how important and valued they are. His work ethic, sense of humor, and general positive spirit make it a joy to work with him. Dave, the school board is deeply grateful to you for everything you have done for our district. Also, thank you to Dave and his colleague Al, who are... who was another award winner for their generous donation to a family in need. This award comes with a little monetary token, and Al and Dave have donated that token, that money, to a family in need in the district. So, thank you and congratulations.
Would Laura Birch from the School Nutrition Department please stand? Laura showed she is an all-around team player by stepping up with a cheerful attitude to help out and learn new skills this year. She has a compassionate demeanor that is calming and extremely helpful and important when talking to parents. She has excellent rapport with staff at the high school and other schools. Laura is a shining light in the School Nutrition Department in the midst of all the changes caused by COVID-19. Laura, the school board thanks you for your important contributions to the success of Astrid Palma from Silverbrook, please stand. Astrid is an invaluable asset to our system because of her diverse interpersonal and academic skills, ability to both anticipate and respond to the constantly changing needs of the school and the students, and her positive example to both children and colleagues. Astrid consistently articulates to groups and individuals her recognition of their positive actions by praising growth and recognizing effort in a genuine and respectful way. Astrid, the school board wishes to share its gratitude to you for everything you have done for our students and our staff. Congratulations.
So we have two more award recipients who were not able to join us tonight, but we still would like to share their colleagues' words of praise. And so Paul will kick us off here with the first one.
So I get to share a few words regarding Al Sternig, and Al may not be here this evening because he might be out working somewhere in the building, as you'll probably pick up on through the next few sentences here. So, Al is able to be... Hang on, I'm out. It sounds much better this way. Al is able to be a great teacher and mentor to our facilities employees with all of his knowledge and experience. Whenever you have a question, he is your go-to guy for the answer. The amount of work that he can accomplish and follow through on is remarkable. He always has a more efficient way to tackle something. Al will cut grass, trim hedges, shovel snow, assemble furniture, the list goes on and on. When COVID-19 hit and several people were out in the maintenance department, Al was in every day, wearing many hats, and I would add probably wearing many masks as well. He was there making repairs, doing electrical, plumbing, heating, and cooling system work. He can do it all. Al, the school board wishes to thank you for the myriad ways you help our district succeed.
And I'll share some words about Jamie Stettler from McLean's Health Room. And her colleagues write, "Jamie is caring to all students. She goes far above and beyond her required nursing duties. She has worked nonstop since the beginning of the school year to make sure we are all safe and healthy, including students, teachers, and families. Jamie is committed to positive interactions with anyone who enters our school. Jamie makes the students feel so comfortable going in to see her. She shows patience and kindness to all of us. She handles each student with respect, dignity, and understanding. Jamie, the school board thanks you for your selfless commitment to our students, staff, Allow me to wrap up this presentation. You know, I'm... I guess I'm technically speaking for myself, but I think I'm speaking for the remainder of the school board. Often I get asked the question, "Why do you serve on the school board?" And there are many reasons, but one of the main reasons is because of the dedicated, talented employees that we have in this district. And all the award recipients tonight really are shining examples of that. And so we're so glad you were able to join us tonight. On behalf of the board, congratulations, and thank you to all of our staff award recipients. All right, we have come to the public participation portion of our agenda, and I do have one public common card, and it's from John McHugh. And so I will read some information, but John, if you care to step down to the podium, which is here to my right. Excellent, all right, and I will read the statement. Find it right here. All right. "We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant common card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name, address, and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response." And so, Mr. McHugh, you'll have three minutes to address the board. You can use all of that time or some of that time. We have the clock displayed for your reference, and if you could just begin by stating your name, your address, and your relation to the district.
My name is John McHugh. I live at 316 Newark Drive East, West Bend. I'm a resident, and I'm interested in just one question. Does the board have a plan for zero-carbon emissions? That's the topic I'm interested in.
Excellent. I recommend, Superintendent, that we take that question back to our facility staff. Would you agree?
Yes, and we had an opportunity to speak. I've gotten his contact information so that we can make sure and connect and get you connected for further conversations with our facilities manager as well, and we'll make sure and share with the whole board too. So thank you for the question.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next is our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda tonight, we have minutes of the May 10, 2021, regular board meeting, minutes of the May 7, two meetings, a 2:00 p.m. and a 3:00 p.m. special closed school board meeting, revenues and expenses in the aggregate July 2020 through April of 2021. Let's see, and we have on the agenda item ratification of certified staff contracts, support staff contracts, resignations, and retirements, but I believe we had zero in some of those categories. Nonetheless, the consent agenda is in front of us. Is there a motion in support of adopting the consent agenda?
So move, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there a second?
A second, Aaron.
All right. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion?
I just want to make sure that I... I'm reading the minutes of Friday, the 7th, at 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock. I was not at those meetings. I see under section C that it had a school board member roll call, and I do see that it says "excused," so I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay.
That was before my name, not after. Sorry, I see it now. Thank you.
Thank you for checking that. All right. Any other discussion, a final discussion with regard to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. Onto the superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
First, I'd like to say that my reports are this entertaining, but maybe not. So those of you who are here tonight for recognition, you do have full permission from the board and all of us to excuse yourselves from the meeting. So please don't feel that you have to stay for all of the proceedings. It's general practice for us to make sure that you know that you can leave, so you won't offend any of us up here. Start the migration.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you, everyone.
Again, just a congratulations to all of those staff members. You know, it's one of those years where everyone is deserving of an award for all the hard work and dedication they put in, and there's just no place I'd rather be than right here in West Bend. As we do in every single report, we talk about COVID. It seems that all those discussions heated up again last week. While we were forecasting finishing our year with all the mitigation measures in place, including face coverings, we worked quite a bit with public health last week. For perspective, we serve about 7,500 individuals in the organization with students and staff. Last week, we had one case of COVID confirmed and one person awaiting testing. That is remarkable. So it is with those types of numbers, all the other mitigation measures in place, that public health looks at their recommendation as that, a recommendation for us to consider using face coverings as a primary mitigation measure for the remainder of the school year. So when we looked at and untangled, we kind of foreshadowed that to families, we garnered questions, feedback, et cetera. I just wanted to tell you some of the feedback I received. Some of the students were saying, "Communicate directly with us. We want to know how our choices impact maybe athletics or graduation or choices that we make." So we've drafted some communication. I did have an email from a student today saying, "What about our community?" And had great stats, so I'm really proud of our students for doing some great research and taking a position and defending it, so good job, noting that currently only 42.3% of our county is vaccinated against COVID-19, and it's estimated that 70% to 90% is necessary for herd immunity. Although that spread impacts everyone in our school district, it impacts us as students the most. I don't personally feel that it's safe to allow students to go without masks the remainder of the year. It's not worth it for seven days, and just talking about the implications if you're not wearing a face covering and contact tracing and the implication. So students who reach out, I welcome that. I did send our draft communication that we have for students answering those types of questions to not only that student but a couple others to kind of check our thinking, are there things we're missing? Because there's nothing especially like, you know, 2,000 high schoolers to read something with a critical eye and find questions that they might have. So we did run that through and get that feedback. So with that said, we've been getting communication from our families and continue kind of just on both sides, support. I want families to know that this is a recommendation that I have with lead time to put that in place on Wednesday. It's something our board has continued to support if and when we feel it's safe. Again, with one case out of 7,500 individuals, we feel that foreshadowing that Wednesday, and again, masks being recommended for everyone, and with those, you wouldn't need to quarantine, et cetera. We would have all those kind of opportunities that we hope kids can participate in. So with that said, are there any questions from the board, any concerns about this path for that final seven days of school? Anything you want us to consider in our next steps, communications, et cetera?
Any questions? Any thoughts, comments?
What's your feedback been from staff?
So the staff, and again, we've got two feedback loops. One, I sent out something directly to them. I've worked with some representatives of staff members. Just looking at, we don't want to create a divide by saying, "Oh, if you've gotten a vaccine, then you don't have to wear a mask and create that." We've left it as, you know, your personal choice is your choice. We ensure that all of our staff members who wanted had the opportunity to become fully vaccinated while in advance of this date, so they've all had that opportunity. We have no lingering staff members who wanted to when we had asked a couple weeks ago. Outstanding. And then we just didn't want to set anything up again that would divide someone. We're just leaving it as people's personal choice. Other mitigation strategies would still remain. We were concerned about workload because what if all of a sudden, you know, I've got some people who need to step out or do whatever. End-of-the-year activities are traditionally hands-on. What does that mean? What doesn't it mean? We would just have to put that out to our families to understand. There's some things we simply can't replicate for that, so just in attention to safety. We've made it known to our staff in our communications Friday and again Monday to reach out to myself, our Director of HR, their principal. If they have any personal concerns, we have steps to create an environment in which they feel safe. So if we needed to have them step out, do something virtual, and put a supervisor in the room, all of those protections are still in place and available to our staff to help support them. So I think our actions have been in attention to, as I said, all those people that were responsible, staff and students. But we would encourage everyone to keep those questions or feedback coming. We've got some days. You see, I get some questions around, "Well, others did it before us," and, you know, sometimes they're not working hand-in-hand with public health around our own numbers, which is the path we took, so our wheels were a little slower. Or some want the, you know, make the board vote and do it, and it happens like in that moment, and well, that's not well-planned then, and that doesn't give staff or families or students the opportunity to have conversations and create a best plan. We've been solidly behind choice, options, and being in attention to safety and opportunities. So I think this still does that, and we'll have some unique ones, and we will accommodate those.
I guess my comment would be thank you to the administration for, you know, keeping your roller skates on, working with county health on this, because yes, it's changing by the moment, and as we've seen in neighboring communities, the wave is cresting, and you go out to various shops around town. I was in Fleet Farm last weekend, and you see, you know, a lot more faces than you see masks these days, and I'm not quite sure where Menards is these days, but thank you to the community for your patience as the district has continued to work through this. I hate wearing this as much as anybody else, but we need to do the responsible thing and be thorough and measured and make sure that we're, you know, checking all possible avenues and implications. So again, thank you to administration for staying with us one, you know, 26 hours a day.
And just a reminder for our families and for all of our staff, at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, all principals will have an opportunity to convene and go through any preliminary questions. We've had a shared document of what those are so we can get a next wave of communication out to our students and families as we kind of gather that and navigate some unique situations. So just reach out, let us know so that we can be in attention to those. Again, that's through your principal, my office, via email, phone call, et cetera, so we can make sure, again, that we're being responsive to unique and variety of needs. We had a fantastic grad walk on May 13th, made the front page of the paper. Thank you to all those involved. Many board members were there along the way. All of our seniors were invited to go to their elementary schools, walk around the school, mostly outside, while the current elementary students and staff cheered for them. They also went to Silverbrook Badger. They were greeted by the Badger Orchestra and all school mascots. They finished the event with lunch at the high schools from Texas Roadhouse. So thank you to Texas Roadhouse for that fabulous lunch. We did have that one fleeting moment of panic when the kids don't really use their lockers as much this year because they're in attention to bringing their stuff, and they all started eating barbecue in their gowns. So it was that moment of panic, like, "Please take those off for a moment, put them aside." But it was an amazing event. I'd invite you to take a look at some of the pictures. And speaking of graduations, just a reminder that it will be held Saturday, June 5. We'll be outdoors on the football field. The east ceremony's at 10:00 a.m., west starting at 1:30. We have an amazing ceremony planned. Thank you. We always have a student group plan that with student-staff speakers and musical selection. So with that, I don't have any other updates, but, Mr. President, I believe there's someone in the audience who missed the opportunity to speak. I'd like to defer some of my time to ensure that we have that opportunity to hear a citizen.
All right, do we have a public common card? Or I'd be happy to introduce the person. We have one. Great. I'd like to introduce Peggy Brennan, I believe it is, and I had read Board Policy 187 before. I think you were here. You'll have three minutes to speak. The timer will be there for your reference. We won't engage in debate with you, but are interested in hearing your comments. Please, if you'd state your name, address, and relation to the district.
Sure. Excuse me, I've had laryngitis for five months. My name's Peggy Brennan. I live at 1726 Tumbleweed Circle, and I'm a parent. My daughters are in freshman and junior in high school. My older daughter is doing a hybrid of virtual learning and coming to... My older daughter is doing a hybrid of virtual learning and coming to school. She has, so when the district announced that they weren't doing finals, nobody announced that for the virtual students. So my daughter was under the impression that the two finals that were in two of her classes, women's studies and English, were not necessary to take, and so she did not take them. As the grades started to approach in January, my husband and I were flabbergasted. She had two Ds. Our daughter's an A B student and always has been. When I contacted Kevin Hurd to find out what was going on, he never returned a single email of mine, never. I then contacted Laura Jackson, the assistant superintendent, and after numerous emails, she did get the two virtual teachers to then reopen those two finals for my daughter to take four months later. Clearly, anybody who's in school, doing school, and then having to go back and recoup information isn't going to do the best they can. And her grades were transferred as then Ds and a D and a D plus. Furious, I contacted them again. Kevin Hurd never responded. Ms. Jackson responded. And I wanted to find out why the scores, first of all, the virtual teachers in West Bend are teaching full-time on top of it. Her women's studies teacher not once responded to an email from myself, my husband, or my daughter, not once. An entire six months or five months of school, not once. And now I've talked to Laura Jackson, and what's happened is my daughter was going to be going to Interlockin School of the Arts in Michigan, and they've rescinded her offer based on her grades. One of the reasons my daughter wanted to go to Interlockin School of the Arts is because she's one of the only African-American girls in this school system. She has come up against racial prejudice since the first grade. Ms. Wimmer and I have had conversations about it, as have Laura Jackson and I. And now she's not capable of going to the school she's worked so hard to go to because the school has now transferred her grades to be, at one time, Ds and Cs. Laura emailed me today that one grade would be changed to a B and the other one to a C+ I find that unconscionable, unconscionable. She's a young girl in the middle of a pandemic trying to navigate virtual learning, and the virtual teachers have not been there to help.
We appreciate your comments. Like I said before, we don't engage in debate. However, I will recommend that Superintendent Wimmer take the topic. Thank you for coming. Superintendent, any additional items in your report?
No, none.
Great, thank you. All right. We move on then to a number of action items. The first one is school board meeting calendar, 2021, 2022, and Superintendent Wimmer will guide us through that.
So the calendar draft is based on our discussion. There were a couple conflicts we noted, and you can see that very first one just showing you what that looks like. So we went back, listened to kind of how we needed to amend it. We made some decisions. It doesn't stick with a second or fourth or first and third, but allows rather a mix to accommodate. So that's the calendar you see in front of you, based on your discussion.
I move to approve the 2021, 2022 school board meeting calendar as presented.
Second by Nancy, thank you. Motion and second to approve the calendar as presented. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And then next, school board committee and delegate assignments. Superintendent Wimmer.
Yes, so previously, we had a board reorganization and elected officers and positions, and then had a discussion regarding various committees. You can see our curriculum committee. We do have room for another person. We can run the committee with two members. So if anyone would like to express interest, you could do that at this time, and we can put that in consideration for action, or you can always reach out to Chris or myself in the future. Otherwise, policy committee continuing on with Chair Joel Ongert, Paul Fisher, Chris Swigert, and CISA Representative Paul Fisher, Head Start Policy Council Erin Dove, and WASB Delegate continuing as Joel Ongert. So barring anyone expressing interest in joining curriculum, you can consider an action for those assignments.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second to approve the assignments as presented. Final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Our next action item, community-based 4K reimbursement rate for 2021, 2022, and Emily Melstrand and Andy Sarno will be presenting this topic. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Wimmer, I have the honor to present this with Emily Melstrand, principal of our four-year-old kindergarten program, Head Start Coordinator and Director. The contract language with our community-based four-year-old where we partner with these different organizations, the agreement has language that's inclusive, talks about the revenue for next year for them, a per student amount based on this year's revenue limit increase. So there's always a year delay because it's information that we know we've got the ability to plan, and that is recommended to slightly increase by a 2% maximum, which our revenue limit did increase by about 3.1%. But it's our recommendation to proceed with allowing an increase of 2% for these groups for next year.
Any questions? Any additional information to present?
No, the only thing that I will add to that is obviously that increased dollar amount allows our community partners to pass along a salary increase and account for any increased benefits for our teachers. So I'm hopeful that you'll approve that recommendation.
All right, a motion would be in order.
I would move to increase the reimbursement rate to 4K partner agencies by 2.0%, resulting in a designation of $2,958 per pupil for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second. Motion and second to increase the rate, designation of $2,958 per pupil. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good, the motion carries. Thank you. Next, unobligated Head Start grant funds and carryover request.
All right, thank you. I came to the board in March of this year and did an overview of our Washington County Head Start strategic plan and budget recommendations. And at that point in time, I had forecasted the likelihood that there would be unobligated funds within one or two of our grants. So we have multiple grants that fund our Head Start program, and two of them, the non-competing continuation base and the COVID-19 one-time allocation, are both grants that we are anticipating unobligated funds. The Office of Head Start allows us to carry forward money that is left unobligated as long as it falls within our five-year grant cycle. And we are entering year four of our five-year grant cycle, and are forecasting that we will have about $105,000 left in our non-competing continuation base grant and just over $50,000 in our one-time COVID allocation. And in alignment with the strategic plan that I brought forth to you in March and you approved, we are asking that you approve that carryover and allocation towards increased certified teaching staff and support staff, custodial time as required by our return-to operations plan. We've had some extra custodial time in our building, cleaning toys and high-frequency touch spaces this year, and also allowing us some flexible transportation options if necessary to support the needs of individual students. The Office of Head Start does ask that we specify those allocations and that we seek board approval. So tonight, I'm asking you for your approval of the allocation of unobligated funds in those two grants for the 2021, 2022 school year. Do you have any questions or any need for any additional information?
The increase of certified teaching staff and support staff, is that adding head count?
Potentially so. Our forecast is based upon today, and I think we're pretty close in that. We're looking at the possibility of increasing another 50% or full-time teacher just to keep our numbers low. That was one of the things I shared quite a bit about in March, is the benefit of co-teaching and/or having that low staff to teacher or staff to student ratio was really impactful on our kids.
So it's not, the money would not be used to give pay raises to existing staff?
Correct.
This would be adding staff and support staff. Thanks.
Absolutely.
This might be a question for Andy, but as we shift these monies around, does that require amending the school's budget itself, or is this merely just the allocation of grant dollars?
Because they'd be a carryover that would be brought forward in next year's budget. They would reflect that in next year's budget accordingly, per the recommendation that's being brought forward.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would move to approve the Washington County Head Start designation of unobligated funds from the non-competing continuation grant and from the COVID-19 one-time funding grant for the 2021, 2022 school year. Is there a second?
Second, Erin.
Thank you, Erin. Motion and second to approve these designations of unobligated funds. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Emily.
And Mr. Sarno, we have a few budget items on the agenda. The next item is budget amendment for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you. I did appreciate the opportunity in getting in front of you two weeks ago. Budget amendment, very, very common at this time of year. The budget changes over the course of the year. A couple of things between last October until now at this point in time that have changed. So COVID expenses, they're allowing, and we incurred expenditures to remain face-to-face as well as the virtual instruction. So anything that's reflected with COVID-related in that instructional need, facilities, projects are partially covered by the general fund, and that was reflected in the budget that is being presented. Any staffing, either salary or benefit changes, so some marriages where there's a single plan that went to a family, any different hiring, employment changes are reflected. They've been captured and updated. Like I said, the virtual learning platform, those costs have been updated currently based on actuals, technology infrastructure, so that's been addressed per Mr. Hurd's tech plan, and then as well, available dollars for curriculum writing. So that budget through that line item was increased slightly to reflect a possible need. Other post-employment benefits or OPEBs are reflected a little bit more aggressive. We have an actuarial study. This is our new, new study, first year with this firm. It's a local Wisconsin company, and they said get just a little bit more aggressive if possible. We do have flexibility there, but if there's available dollars, start planning for that future liability or that obligation towards retirement. Some next steps, recommendation for the approval of the presented budget, so that needs to or could happen this evening. Class one notices within 15 days that we'll have that published in the newspaper. We have, I need to give a full disclosure of this. There's an IBNR report, so incurred but not received. I shared a little bit of information on that, but because we're self-funded and our claims to our premiums ratio is trending well this year, that will reflect savings on the district's side. We don't get that at reports until mid-July, but we're anticipating that it's going to come in favorable, so that will impact our district's bottom line. July 30th, we have a transfer deadline for this OPEB, the Other Post-Employment Benefit Trust transfer, so that needs to happen by the end of July, and then we'll begin our audit the third week of August approximately. So just a few steps ahead of us as we wrap up the year. You have a document that's in front of you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do have a different tab here if you wanted to go over any of the line items, but we did go over that in fairly decent detail here two weeks ago.
Any questions for Andy?
I'll move to approve the recommended budget amendment for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented.
Thank you, Joel. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Kurt. Motion and second to approve the recommended budget amendment for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. And Andy, the preliminary budget for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Yeah, thank you again. Very similar process, yet at the same time, we're not at the tail end of a budget. We are at the beginning phase of a budget. In order to begin incurring expenditures, we wish to have a preliminary budget approved. Does not follow the same guidelines where a class one or a class two notice. That is that September annual meeting, the budget hearing that we have. So this truly is meant to begin incurring some expenditures that are planned and strategic to keep our business going, as well as receiving the revenues that come in between now and September when that more formal process occurs. Some things that are preliminary, our enrollment, we do monitor that between now and the third Friday count in September, third Friday in September count. Benefit costs are estimates. They're in process of being finalized, but we do have an estimate at this point in time. Our instructional delivery model, so even as we're taking a look at what's going to happen with a virtual or a hybrid platform, what costs are associated with that, they're estimated at this point in time. We've got a good plan of what that might look like. Mr. Ross's facilities projects, that January of 2021 project list was brought forward and approved. He's implementing that. That's well underway with permits and contractors and bids. They are coming back fairly competitively priced, and it's highly possible that that may come in front of you for a couple more projects, still to stay within his allocation that was allowed, not even including the carryover, the fund balance that exists within those couple of funds at this point in time. Technology services, again, they are rolling out their tech plan, and they know exactly what has to happen in order to maintain on that program cycle. Curriculum, professional development opportunities, both of those have been included appropriately within the preliminary budget, and then as well, and one of the biggest commodities at this point in time is just patients. So again, these are estimates and assumptions, and they will continue to come in a little bit more concrete as fall nears. Couple next steps, just monitoring the state budget, making sure that we implement them when they're valid. Continuing the strategic analysis, trying to make sure that we have that return on investment with the monies that we're spending. I always like to promote, we have a September membership count. Again, that's the third Friday, it's the 17. I think that's about as early as it can get. Our annual meeting is set for Monday, September 27th. I think we're at this venue for that. And then we have our final budget levy, which is the dollar amount, and the mill rate, which is the taxation percentage on Monday, October 25th. Similarly, we do have a document that if you'd like to review that, which we went in good detail on that two weeks ago, I'd be happy to either answer questions or go over any of those line items.
Andy, I appreciate the thorough explanation because compared to the private sector, this is, and this is, could seem to be an odd way to do a budget. So really, just to explain to the community, not to call this a rough draft budget, but the way that it works is we, this is somewhat an initial draft, which ultimately administration will come with a final recommendation, which we will receive in September, September 27th for the annual meeting and budget hearing. So what we adopt tonight is not the final budget.
That's correct.
Great. Any questions for Andy? All right. Well, hearing none, I would make a motion to approve the Scenario A preliminary budget from the 2021, 2022 school year as presented. Is there a second?
I second that, Kurt.
Thank you, Kurt. Motion and second to approve the Scenario A preliminary budget for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented. Any final discussion?
I think it's important to note for the community that Scenario A basically is a flat revenue projection from the state, so we're taking, we'll say, the conservative approach here. We're not assuming that there's going to be additional funding coming out of Madison. We could change, but, you know, we're trying to be as conservative as we possibly can at this point, correct?
Absolutely. So last year was the first year that we presented two different scenarios for the budget, just the uncertainty of what was going to happen with COVID. Could something have been overridden even though it was a two-year state-approved budget? This year, at this point in time, it's a new biennial budget that is being presented, still in its infancy, a lot of discussion. still in its infancy, a lot of discussion, discussion and lobbying, so this is conservatively low. It's, it's, it's going to change, but we don't know at this point in time where it would change. There's discussions that are formed, reoccurring and whatnot, but we will continue to monitor that. So thank you for pointing that out, sir.
So as Chris referenced, with this being a very fluid process, if the state budget is finalized, third week of August, just to pick a random date, and it's radically different than what we've approved here, we would reconvene most likely in a special meeting to revise this budget and adjust accordingly, but right now, we aren't getting any guidance, so we got to go with something. We're taking an even approach.
Yep. So you will see me on a fairly regular basis. I will stay and cast the communication with you as those items materialize and become something that we can count on. And leading into the September meeting, there will be, there will be changes that we will discuss.
Thank you.
And just maybe one clarification point, what you're foreshadowing in this preliminary budget A is a flat, no increase in our mill rate. Thank you for being fiscally responsible during, during trying times. So that is correct on?
Yep. At this point in time, based on our estimates, this budget that's in front of you, and we've utilized a Baird, the Baird Forecast Model, is projecting it to be $7,097, which was the same mill rate. I believe it would be the third or the fourth year in a row for that. So correct?
Thanks.
That is the goal. That's one of the driving factors. Very little, very, very few dollars allowed for any type of, the title is eluding me right now, the defisance. That, that's because, again, declining enrollment, our property values are growing slightly faster than the remainder of the state, so that's something that's been slowly going away. But there are two exemptions that allow us access to monies for one more year, for this year, from this year to next year, where this is, I think it's a very quality budget for preliminary, and we'll continue to monitor where we're at, the impact with the state aid, property taxes being that last component, so very mindful of the mill rate and the taxation rate.
Great. Any other questions for Andy? All right, I believe that was part of our final discussion, so I'll now call the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Andy, thank you for your work. Appreciate it, and thanks for your presentation.
I appreciate your time, Andy. Thank you.
All right, we are on to future agenda items. So for our board meeting calendar, future meetings include a curriculum committee meeting on June 1 and regular board meetings on June 7 and on June 21. And Superintendent Wimmer, I believe our intent is that we will move the future board meetings back to the Education Service Center.
Correct.
All right. So for those who plan to attend future board meetings, please watch those, those notices. All right. Are there any items for follow-up and communication to be placed on future board agendas? All right. Hearing none, we have several items to consider in executive session, and therefore, I would move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, employment and compensation. And further, pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.851(f) for the purpose of considering disciplinary charges against a student for allegedly engaging in conduct that endangered the property, health, and safety of others while at school or while under the supervision of school authority, namely, student discipline. Is there a second?
Second, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the reminder. We are to do a roll call vote, and I have the roll call sheets. So I'll pull a random one. All right, we'll do a roll call vote to enter into executive session. Mr. Zweigert votes yes. Mrs. Justman?
Yes.
Tony Schmidt is absent. Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned into executive session.